Thank you all. Okay, good morning. Sadly, we do not have the Ipswich Jazz Band here this morning. But let's give our round of applause for them anyway, just because they know us. So, thank you for coming and thank you for being here promptly. I'd like to just point out that it's the moderator's responsibility to set up town meeting, who sits where, etc., but this year, because of when the world stopped turning, we have to look to our town manager, who is really right there with me all the way. And let's have a round of applause for coming today. So, you've got to think of a lot of things, and one thing I did not think of, I thought of it in the middle of the night, but I did it this morning, was to put the American flag here. But anyway, could you all please stand for the pledge, for the virtual, and then remain standing after the pledge? All right, there we go. Look to the flag at the school. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And in honor of George Floyd, Ray Charles Brooks, and the many other victims of like circumstances, let us concede that while we say "one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all," that's the goal, that's not the reality. In addition to my memory, honor of them, let's also remember the victims of this COVID-19 pandemic. And remember to be grateful for the doctors and nurses and grocery store workers helping get us through it. So let's just have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Have a seat. So, before I'm being present, the meeting will come to order. Welcome to the June 27, 2020 Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Ipswich. The meeting pursuant to the warrant served by the constable and the clerk will enter the return of services part of the record. This being an unusual meeting in the midst of a pandemic, I'd like to keep the opening remarks brief, so I'll get right to it. But in addition to the rules, I'll recap in a second. Let me say thank you for wearing masks as requested. As I've said publicly, it's the neighborly thing to do, and citizens in a democracy should feel some sense of responsibility to each other. And I'm delighted to see that the neighborly spirit here among us. I'll also add that I will not recognize anyone who speaks or does not wear a mask, but when you do speak, as I am, you can lower your slightly, because it's difficult to project through masks. This morning, we have 13 articles under warrant, and I hope to finish quickly. In the off chance we don't, we'll reconvene tomorrow at noon. Beyond that, here's a recap of the rules. Annual speaking, state name and address. If you want to speak, come up to the microphone right here. Rather than the normal presentation, I will read the main motions. I'll then call for the boards and committees' endorsements. There's going to be one change to one of them. The finance committee is going to re-vote its position on one of them. And then we'll go to debate. And if some of the boards want to have additional presentation, they're welcome to it. Comments and questions will be directed to the moderator, and if need be, we'll call for the answer from the respective official. For those who have smartphones and laptops, feel free to email them to moderator@ipswichma.uof. Mark DeSalle here has access to that inbox, and I'll look at those and put them out as needed. As usual, no comments of a personal nature, no applause during debate. And also, this morning, we're using electronic voting, so it's going to take a minute to go through that. Jessica Mancini from Turning Technologies will explain how to use them. But let me emphasize that if you checked in to vote in the parking lot, the frequency is 82, and you need to vote from the parking lot. And you are clicker-only registered down there. And as to the folks in the cars, please don't let your cars idle. There is a statute prohibiting idling more than 15 minutes? Five minutes, thank you. So, please don't let your cars idle more than five minutes. And for those of you who checked in for the tent, the frequency is 74, and make sure that you have the right one for the tent. When the meeting is over, we'll exit row by row from the back without crowding. And those with clickers can put them in the blue boxes that I've lined up along the side that says "put the voter's clicker here." And lastly, before introducing Ms. Mancini to go through the electronic voting, I'd like to acknowledge and thank Barry Hopping, Chair of the School Committee, for his 21 years of selfless dedication to our schools. Barry has decided not to run for an eighth term, and on behalf of the meeting, as well as the finance committee and the school board, let me say thank you very much, Barry, for your years of service. And to give Barry the recognition he deserves, School Committee member Chub Whitten will detail his many contributions. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you to everyone here today. What a beautiful setting. My name is Chub Whitten, and I live at 263 Archelo Road in Ipswich. It's no surprise that last week's school committee meeting was the most crowded in the age of Zoom. It was Barry Hopping's last meeting as a school committee member. On the call were family, friends, past and present school committee members. Two of whom were students of his as well. Administrators and fellow educators. A life's work was celebrated. All were grateful to have the opportunity to say thank you. Barry has been a teacher, an athletic director, principal, and a school committee member and present chair. He has been an influential part of thousands of students' learning experiences in this and other districts. He has been, he has been an integral part of the Ipswich School District's rise to excellence. His number-one priority was, has, and will always be acting in the best interests of the students of this district. Semper Peratus, always prepared. That is how Barry came every day to his 21 years of service on the school committee. Preparation is a given for Barry. He expects no less from his colleagues as well. Barry's perspective, ethics, and institutional knowledge have been an asset for the school committee. His command of the English language and humor have helped as well. One school committee member has said that he has been the best school committee chair in his tenure. Barry has always, as we all know, has always been very proud to have been born in this community and to have served it for as long as he has. I'm sure his service isn't finished yet. As with any volunteer commitment, Barry's school committee work has kept him away from family and friends at times. I would like to thank his wife, Kath Lee, and his son, Brendan, for loaning him to the district for as long as you have. Thank you both. We planted an elm on campus here last week in his honor. It's right over there next to the spruce tree. It is now known as the hopping elm. It's particularly appropriate, it's a particularly appropriate species to represent Barry. It will influence its surroundings for a long time, stand high above its peers, and cast a long beneficial shadow. I'm grateful to have enjoyed his influence in my brief time on the committee. Barry, you will be missed and be a tough act to follow. Unlike Tom Brady, we are grateful that you retire as a Tiger and with your team. Thank you for your service. You have certainly set the bar high. Barry, you want to say a few words?
For the sake of time, very few.
Take your time. Take your time. You've got plenty of time.
When, when Chub informed me that they were going to be planting a tree here, my first thought was a crabapple tree. But I, in all honesty, I, I usually come very well-prepared to make a few comments. I didn't prepare anything for today. I wanted this to come from the heart. And two weeks ago, I had the pleasure of addressing the class of 2020 at their graduation at Crane Beach. For those of you that weren't able to participate or weren't part of the rolling rally, it was a spectacular, spectacular outpouring of support from the Town of Ipswich. And that segues into today. Fast forward that the Town of Ipswich has always, always represented our kids, our residents, second to none. And if you don't, if you need any further evidence of that, just look around what's happening in other communities. We turn out, we have great, to coin Chub's phrase, we have great Tiger pride. You have your priorities straight, and I can't thank you enough for the 21 years of support that you've given to me. I did grow up in this town. I was one of the first classes at the New Winthrop School back in the '50s. I told someone the other day that if you figure in the 12 years I attended Ipswich Public Schools, 19 years I taught here, and 21 years on school committee, that's, I think the number's 52. That makes me, I'm 54 years old, so you get an idea of how, when I started, which obviously, do the math, that's not accurate. But I, I'm eternally grateful for you, residents, the voters, taxpayers, because I could always count on any time, annual town meeting, fall town meeting, any time there was an article that came up in regard to the schools, you were there and you would have had to support our kids. Great schools attract great teachers. Great teachers stay at great schools. I am proud of the accomplishments that we have made over the past 21 years. Obviously, there were some disappointments along the way, but I take great faith in the process of finding new members that are going to carry on the work. Our schools are in tremendous shape right now, and I have every reason to believe that going forward, they're only going to get better. So I do, from the bottom of my heart, I really want to thank all of you. All my friends that are here today, the ones that we have, the acquaintances I've made over the years, people I have yet to meet. I look forward to having a little extra time. Maybe I'll see you downtown, and we'll get a cup of coffee or something. But again, thank you again for all your support, all your emails, all your texts. Truly appreciate it, and it's been a joy to serve our children and to you. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very, very much. So before we go to Jessica Mancini to explain the electronic voting, I just want to recognize her state representative, Brad Hill, town mayor. So Jessica, how do these clickers work?
Good morning, Ipswich. Thank you for having me out to assist you with your town meeting. The clickers are very simple. They're already on, you don't have to turn anything on. If you are in the parking lot, you should have a parking lot device. If you turn the device over, you should say "parking lot" on the back. That's how you know you have the right one. If you are in the tent, you won't have a sticker on yours. It's very simple. Mr. Moderator will introduce an article, and he will open debate. Polling will be open. You will press 1 for yes, 2 for no. Polling will remain open until Mr. Moderator indicates that polling is to, please poll now, and then we'll give you an additional 10 seconds to close the polling. Once polling is closed, you will no longer be able to vote on that article. Should you accidentally make a mistake, you can change your vote, and up until polling is closed, the device will take the last entry that you entered. So let's go ahead and try it. I'm going to give you a test question. So, "This year, I came to town meeting because it is on a Saturday. Press 1 for yes, 2 for no. Please vote now. And as an addendum, if you are in the parking lot, please go ahead and put your arm out the window. I want to make sure that you hit that receiver."
That's important for those folks who are in their cars. Make sure you click with your hand, you vote with your clicker out the window.
You will also notice that once you've entered your vote, you will receive a green light. I'm going to go ahead and give you 10 more seconds to vote on this particular question. I'm starting that 10-second timer now. Five, four, three, two, one. Polling is closed for this particular question.
Jessica, the results just clicked through.
That's okay. I went back to them. So, 63% of you said yes, you are here because it is on a Saturday, and 37% of you said that you'd come any day, basically, for town meeting. So thank you. And I have one more test question for you. So, "Will the Red Sox win the Red, will the Red Sox win the World Series? Press 1 for yes, press 2 for no. Polling is open. Please vote now. I'm starting your final 10 seconds. Five, four, three, two, one. Polling is closed. And it looks like we don't have much faith in the Red Sox this year. 71% say no, and 29% of you are optimistic. Does anybody have any questions?
We've used these a couple of years ago, so somebody may have remembered that. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jessica. So let's go to Article 1, the consent calendar. As you know, this is where the select board, when they draw the warrant, typically put relatively uncontroversial matters. So I'm just going to read through the seven items, and if anybody has any question that wants to debate it, just yell "hold," and then we'll go back to that one. So 1 is to fix the annual salaries. 2, to transfer funds. 3, to hear reports and continue standing committees. 4, to establish various expenditures under revolving funds. 5, to authorize payment. 6, to amend action taken under required town meeting. And 7, to appropriate funds under Chapter 90. Okay, so we'll go to a vote. All the, what? I'm sorry. Let me read the motion first, excuse me. "Mr. Whitmore of the Select Board moves to set the salaries of elected officials to transfer funds from the Electric Light Department, to hear reports from committees and continue listed committees of standing committees of town meeting, and amend Section 1529 of the general bylaws and establish expenditure limitations of revolving funds to appropriate the sum of $440,336 under the authority of Chapter 90, and authorize the Select Board to borrow in anticipation of state aid for site projects, all as set forth in Article 1 of the warrant that's down there." Is there a second? Second? All those in favor, please press 1 on your clicker, and those opposed, press 2. 10 seconds, Jessica. Okay. That passes 97% to 3. I declare the motion carries. Okay, before going to Article 2, as you see in Article 1, we, you vote to hear reports from committees. I'd like to recognize Bob Weatherall from the Public Safety Building Committee to give us a recap on where that committee stands. Mr. Weatherall.
Hello, everybody. Bob Weatherall, 33 Labor Division. A member of the Public Safety Facility Committee. Wrist tilting. Better. "At a recent meeting of the committee, we reaffirmed with consideration of these unique times that the town should seize this moment to commit that fall town meeting to build new public safety facilities. The need for new public safety facilities is acute. The need is undiminished by the challenging times these are. These times illuminate the importance and value of creating spaces that enhance civic engagement and communication and safety. Some will say that now is not the time to build. Ipswich acknowledged nearly 70 years ago that our fire station was not adequate to meeting the needs of the town. We'll continue to face events which incline some to delay meeting known needs. But delays exacerbates the need, and delays increases the cost of meeting that need. Voters should recognize that we have an opportunity to borrow money to build at an historically low rate, and that current conditions may be such that a competitive bidding environment will lower building costs. Voters should know that while we are in a challenging moment, we expect to start building in 2022, when we can reasonably assume the virus and its effects will be behind us. The committee's efforts, adjusting our outreach to fit the times, are going to include updates to our website with information on the proposed facility. We'll be adding soon to the website a schematic plan and elevation drawings of the building on its site. We'll be creating virtual tours of the police and fire stations, and we'll make those available on both ICAM and on our website. And when conditions allow us again, we will host tours of the current facilities and meet with you all to talk about the project. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Mr. Wasserman? I was, I was just about to do that. I've been corrected by now three people. The Article 1, the main motion in Article 1 passed by the vote of 276 to 10. Okay, it toggles back and forth, numbers to percentage, and she, it came in as percentage. So it was 276 to 10. Okay, Article 2. "Mr. Whitmore of the Select Board moves to appoint Janice Clement Skelton to the Finance Committee for a term of three years." Is there a second? Second. Someone from the Finance Committee want to speak to us?
Mike Doherty, Ten Appleton Park, Vice Chair, Ipswich Finance Committee. The Finance Committee, at its warrant hearing, in the interest, supports the reelection of Janice Clement Skelton to a three-year term in the Finance Committee. Janice is one of a few members of the town boards who is born and raised in the community. She has served the Finance Committee for a decent amount of terms, and that, with the institutional knowledge of town, her expertise professionally, we think that it's very appropriate that she get reappointed to another three years. This past two years, she has served excellently as Chair of the Finance Committee, and we hope that you support Janice Clement Skelton for another three-year term to the Ipswich Finance Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by pressing yes on your clicker. And those opposed, click no. 2. Mike Johnson? Is Mike Johnson here? Mike, can you get the other tellers? Before we go to a vote on this one, we're having trouble with the clickers in the parking lot. Evidently, they're not registering, so...
Some are.
Some are and some aren't. So what we're going to do is use only the clickers in the tent. And for those who are in cars, you'll need to, when it comes to a vote, raise your hand out the car, the card that you would get when you came in, out your window, and the tellers will count. Mike, how many do you have? Four, four tellers? Seven. Let's get them all the way here, and I'll square them in, and then we'll break it into... All right, it's going to take a second. The meeting will be in a brief recess. To affirm that you will faithfully and impartially count the votes in this town meeting, if called a good sound. Thank you. Okay. So the tellers are going to go out and scope it out, and we're going to take a minute to figure out what the sections are for the voting out there. Just sit tight, sorry for the technical problem. And while we're doing this, if those of you in the parking lot, would you please hold your card out the driver's window? If there are two voters in the car, or, put it this way, anyone with a card in the car, please hold it out the window, so we can determine which cars are voting cars and determine the scope of the project. Thank you. "To reappoint Janice Clement Skelton to the Finance Committee for three years, seconded, the Finance Committee, the Ward Selector, and the School Committee are all unanimously in support, and this calls for a simple majority vote." So, we will go to the vote. All those in favor, please either click in the tent or raise your card in the parking lot. Okay, so we can, the only electronic voting clickers that are working are in the tent, so we can go to 10-second countdown on that. Those who are in favor and against. Three, two, one. Okay, vote is closing on the tent. And we're going to get the vote from the parking lot, yes, and then we're going to count the votes. Okay, and now, so that's 103 in favor in the parking lot now. The parking lot, please, those opposed to the main motion. The tent is voting, so... Jessica, you got the 103 yes for the parking lot? Jessica? Okay, all right. Okay, I declare the motion carries, 288 to 29. Congratulations, Janice, and thank you very much for your hard work. And let's have a round of applause for Janice for all the work that she's put in. Now, that was sort of an exercise with the parking lot to do the no vote, the three votes, but we're going to have to do it that way 13 times, all right? We're going to vote with electronic voters, voting with mechanisms in the tent, and I'll have that number run away, and I'm going to have to wait... have that number run away, and I'm going to have to wait for the tellers who have the system of counting rows to give me one number yes, the one number no. So it's going to take a little bit, but we're all in this together. Okay, Article 3. Mr. Whitmore of the Select Board moves to appropriate $27,181,875 to the town's municipal budget. Fiscal year 2021 to be spent as follows. General Government: $753,898. Finance: $1,082,785. Planning: $581,892. Public Safety: $5,550,969. Public Works: $4,740,111. Community and Cultural Services: $1,538,897. Benefits from Mises, not Mises, $5,608,740. For a general fund total of $19,857,271. And in addition, Water Department: $40,283,941. Waste Water Department: $2,939,732. Sanitation Solid Waste Recycling: $103,911. For a total municipal budget of $27,181,875. And that the funds must be raised, appropriated, and transferred to fund the fiscal year 2021 municipal budget. Septic Loan Program: $33,740. Tourist Account: $2,000. Debt Premium: $1,671. Overlay Surplus: $125,000. Waterway Improvements: $141,218. Raise and appropriate $19,431,216. Water Seats: $4,82,608. Water Reserves: $201,333. Waste Water Reserves... One, I'm sorry, I just read that. Waste Water Receipts: $2,830,987. Waste Water Reserves: $1,5,745. Sanitation Solid Waste Recycling: $103,911. Total Funding Sources: $27,181,875. Sorry for stumbling over those numbers. Is there a second? Second. On this, Finance Committee voted 5 to 4 in favor. The Select Board unanimously in support, as were the School Committee, and this takes a two-thirds vote because money comes out of stabilization. Okay, recommendations from the boards? Ms. Skelton from the Finance Committee?
(INAUDIBLE) Finance Committee?
Is that right? Yep. Maybe a little closer to us? Like, I don't know, I don't know, I'm sorry.
Is that better? Okay. Janice Clement Skelton, Chair of the Finance Committee. It is unusual for the Finance Committee to actually split the vote on the budget, so I wanted to speak a bit to some of our votes in the report. The Finance Committee voted 5 to 4 in favor of the budget. The dissenting vote was not having to do with the numbers in the budget or how the money is being allocated. For those of you who watched the Finance Committee warrant hearing, the dissenting vote really represented a different philosophy in the committee, where we were split essentially with half of the committee looking to go ahead and create an FY21 budget in the absence of state aid numbers, and half of the committee advocating to wait and take advantage of the state's emergency legislation to allow us to go with an interim monthly budget. So that represents the split vote.
Thank you very much. Mr. Whitmore from the Select Board?
Yes? Sorry. Willie Whitmore, Kinsman Court, Select Board Chair. The Select Board voted unanimously in support of this budget. As the Chair of the Finance Committee said, there is a difference in philosophy. The Select Board endorses the concept of having the flexibility that we need to have additional funds available if we need them in this time of the COVID crisis, and we understand and trust our town manager to manage the cash flows sufficiently and carefully. The Select Board supports it unanimously.
Thank you very much. So we'll go to debate. Does anyone care to be heard on this? Mr. Goguen, Kingfisher Road, you have three minutes.
Hi, Mr. Schmar, oh, Goguen, Kingfisher Road. I have an announcement.
You have, oh, you have a motion. May I speak, please? Okay, it's a little language problem. So, Mr. Goguen, Kingfisher Road moves to reduce the municipal budget by 10%. Is anyone going to second that?
Second.
Second. Okay, Mr. Goguen.
Thank you, Mr. Schmar. We all know what's going on, and I'm sure everybody in this room has been touched either by someone dear, or they've been touched physically by their jobs and laid on. Also, in the news, we've seen and heard the governor has not made any commitment, and it's basically still up in the air. So I think when you say, well, matter of fact, I don't think you can actually, from what I've read, have a firm commitment tonight or today, which is very cool in here, you did a good job. But basically, I think 10% is doable, and it means this year we will have to do without some things, but we don't even know what this year is going to bring. We don't know what next year is going to be, but we do have an outlet in the fall to review this. So any of you that are hurting now and are struggling now, a little extra 10% commitment by this town and the people that are here today can make a vote that we can cut the 10%. Now, how do you cut the 10%? That's the town manager's job. He'll have to go to every department and say, hey, we have to cut 10%. This is what we have to do. Locally, we've seen what's happened to one of the major companies in town, and it's very, very hard to do, a business, and you can make people very happy when you hire them, but when you have to cut, it's hard. And this is what's happening in town. Major companies have had to do it, and I think that we can get together and say, yes, we're going to cut.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Okay, so a reduction of 10%. I'm going to ask a couple officials to put that into concrete terms. First, Janice from the Finance Committee, if this motion passes, can you give us a thumbnail sketch and elevator speech on what that means?
Happily. So the budget as it stands right now represents $125,000 worth of spending over FY20. So if you look at it from those terms, the modest, the increase is quite modest. And the budget in front of you actually represents the second take as the budget. So the first FY21 budget that came through that represented what we thought would be best-case scenario. Once we had a better sense of where the state was and wasn't, the town and the schools came back and they cut an additional 10%. And that's what got us to the budget that's in front of you now. So there's two ways of looking at it. The first is if, because the high school, middle school high school debt has retired this year, we put that money back into the budget. So with that money back in, this budget represents about $1.2 million increase in spending because we've captured or reallocated that savings. Above and beyond that high school debt is actually $125,000 in savings. So to, and I do have one question for Mr. Goguen. Were you referring to 10% off of the general fund or the total municipal budget? Because that makes a difference.
Well, the motion is to the municipal budget.
Total municipal. Okay. So our town finance director does have the revised numbers on what a 10% cut looks like as far as dollars that would come out of the budget.
Sarah?
Good morning. The total cut to the budget would be $1.985 million. It would drop the budget to a total of $17,871,562. It would drop the tax rate by 65 cents, and those are major cuts. 72% of our budget is personnel and benefits, and so there would be a lot of cuts that would be necessary for us to reach that figure.
Okay, anyone else care to be heard on this? Okay, so we'll go and we'll vote. Yeah? Yeah, does anybody want to speak on this?
Sure, the Select Board unanimously opposes this motion. As Sarah just referenced, it would have dire consequences on our community, and it would likely include cuts to personal salaries and is in direct counter, it goes against contracts that we already have negotiated with employees and unions.
Just now, before we go to a full vote, I'd like the Finance Committee to vote on the motion?
Please.
Okay. So Finance Committee, if we could do a quick vote on the motion to reduce the municipal budget by 10% for FY21. And I think we'll do a hand vote. All those in favor? See none? All those opposed? I see Joe's card. I see Blue sticking out of his hand. So we are 8 to 1 opposed to this motion.
And Barrett, does Scored have one? I guess. Total?
All right, so the power's gone out, they're working on it. So as to Mr. Goguen's motion, Finance Committee, the School Committee, and the Finance Committee and the School Committee are both unanimously opposed.
The radio's going to take seconds to come back.
Okay.
So it's going to take a 10-second to be exact.
All right. Janice, Janice, you are 8 to 1 opposed?
Correct.
Correct. So the Finance Committee is 8 to 1 opposed.
Not 8 to 0. We only have eight members.
I'm sorry, 8 to 0. We only have eight of them here. The Select Board was unanimously opposed, and the School Committee is unanimously opposed. So does anyone else want to be heard?
I have one more question.
No. You've made your motion, you have your three minutes. Let's go to a vote. Mr. Goguen moved to amend the municipal budget by reducing it by 10%. If you're opposed, raise your card. And if you're in support, now raise your card. If you're in support. I declare the motion fails by a majority vote. Okay, back to the main motion under Article 4. So the main motion is to appropriate the funds that I read. All those in favor? I'm sorry, oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a question on the main motion.
You have a question on what?
On the main motion.
Okay.
I was just curious, we talked about the flexibility, we're moving forward with the budget today so we don't miss out on the flexibility of state money, so like I, if we don't move forward, I'm sorry, if we do move forward, are we missing on flexibility when things get decided at the state level? Are we going to close the door on anything?
Let's direct your questions to the chair. So the question is, what do we move?
If we move forward with the budget today, are we going to shut the door on any flexibility in the future once the state, once there's more certainty coming from the state?
Okay, you know, I'm going to have Representative Hill speak to that. Okay? And then, Janice, well, I'll hear you if I'd like to. Steven Brad hadn't raised his hand, so he had something to say about that. So do you want to speak to that? Then we'll go to the committee chairs.
Brad Hill, 16 Birch Lane. So the answer to your question would be, once the budget is passed at the state level, which happens every year, we come back for a fall town meeting, and at that time, you would accept the money if there's any additional increases at that time. So the flexibility would be there for the town to accept that money at a future special town meeting.
Thank you. Janice, did you want to add to that?
I do. So, you know, this is essentially where the Finance Committee was split on our vote. So as Representative Hill indicated, if there's additional money that we unanticipated, we would have the opportunity at fall town meeting to add that in. The reverse is also true. So if state aid comes in lower than anticipated, even after our 10% cut, we would need to go to a special town meeting in the fall to make further reductions.
Mr. Wasserman?
I have two questions, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
First of all, we are voting on the total motion with $27 million involved. Previously, on Phil Goguen's motion to change, that was only on the municipal budget and not on the balance of the court.
Correct.
That's one question. My other question is to the four members of the Finance Committee who voted against this budget, and I wonder if there is a spokesperson for that point of view and whether they would address this. Thank you.
Janice, you want to speak to that?
Sure, happily. I was one of those who voted against this budget, and like my fellow FinCom members in the minority, our concern is that the uncertainty with state aid and local receipts is significant enough that we could very well be anticipating additional cuts in the fall. Again, philosophical issue, there's two ways to approach this. One is to come to town meeting with a very conservative, much lower budget, and create an active add-back list, which we have done in the past. The other approach is to come in with the budget that we have and then make cuts if needed. So, you know, inductive versus deductive process. Again, you know, where there's some concern that we may be in a difficult position come fall with the pandemic and may not be able to meet again, but if necessary, we would have to come back and make additional cuts to a budget and to, you know, quite possibly programs and personnel two to three, maybe even four months into the fiscal year, which we thought was more disruptive than coming in with a lower budget.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. Wasserman?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Okay. Sarah?
Garrett, you have a FinCom meeting, and I'm not sure we're up there on what I thought I heard. The bond for the, the school has been paid off, so there was a vote by the town to pay that bond off. So there was a vote by the town to pay that bond off.
Sarah, Sarah, can you speak to that? The bond for the school has been paid off?
I have a question. And I think I heard that this budget includes taking those tax revenues the town voted to pay for that bond and keep collecting those revenues and put it into this year's budget. Did I hear that right?
Janice, is that correct?
No. Sarah, you want to answer that?
No. Tony, do you want to speak to that?
Sarah's got this, all right.
The, the debt excluded bonds that were used for the middle school, high school, those have been paid off this fiscal year. Those were debt excluded, the debt exclusion floats on the levy. So next year, that debt is not there, we will not pay it, it will not be charged on the levy.
Okay, so there would be a tax deduction?
Correct.
Very good. That's all I wanted to make sure I answered. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sir?
Tom Canair, 90 Central Street. Just a quick question, if we, if we vote this motion down, does that mean that we're gonna default to the state interim budget process?
Janice? I believe it is.
Excellent question. So if we vote this motion down, it has very little impact on the town in the immediate future. We do have an interim budget that our Finance Director has submitted to the state and has been approved. And that interim budget for the month of July will cover all of our fiscal needs. The state has, as I had mentioned earlier, created emergency legislation that allows us to do that, I think it's for three months, until there's more certainty around the budget. And I'm sorry, more certainty around revenues going into the budget.
Anyone else? Yeah, Mr. Tony, do you want to?
Thank you. Anthony Moreno, Town Manager. I just want to stress, folks, we already cut, as Janice said and many others, we've already made a lot of cuts to this budget now. I've also, before we even got into this, we went back and asked the department heads to ask for a 5% cut on the overall budget. We didn't take all of those cuts, but we anticipate that if the state aid comes in where we think it may, we may have to go back and do additional cuts. So we already know where we're ready to make cuts in the fall. And we're also not gonna spend that money. We're not gonna go ahead until we get that state aid number. No, it's not gonna be anybody spending any additional funds that we have to other than to provide the services that we have to the Ipswich resident owners and business, you know, residents and business owners. So I just want to stress that. We're already taking a conservative approach, we've done that since March. You know, we've limited spending, we've asked department heads not to only spend what they had to, to provide the, you know, the necessary services. So we're taking this very seriously. We know we may have to come back in the fall and make additional cuts, but we're ready to do that when that's, when, you know, when and if that time comes. So I just want to stress that, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Mario, a follow-up question. Clarity, on page seven of the book, we're talking about the...
You referring to page seven of the Finance Committee report?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Bottom line is, the high school, middle schools are gonna be paid off. If they were paid off, you would be relieving right here for 20, year 20, relieving taxpayers of $2.5 billion in anticipation, an annual principal and interest. So that's $2.5 billion of your dollars.
What's your question, sir?
My question is, how can you use that money ahead of time?
Sarah, you want to speak to that?
Yes, the $2.5 million, as I stated before, is debt service that we no longer will pay. We do not have that debt service in our budget in FY '21. And also on that $2.5 million, the MSBA gave us $1.389 million in revenue. So in effect, we got money from them and reduced that $2.5 million down. So, but we're not using, we're not spending that. That debt is paid off, it's gone, it's done. Just like if you pay off your mortgage, you no longer have mortgage payments anymore. So in FY '21, that debt service is not in the budget, it's not in your tax bills, and so that money is in effect gone. In this fiscal year, you could only use it for debt service. Does everybody understand that? Yes, I hope, okay, thank you.
No, this isn't clear at all because it says...
No, sir, sir, sir.
Yes.
She answered your question, you have another question? There's someone else behind you that would like to speak, so. Please step aside so she can speak. Please step aside so she can speak, sir. And if you have another question, put it together.
Tammy Jones, 1 Cview, also a member of the Select Board. I'm gonna urge people to please consider voting for this budget. We have, as Tony Moreno has mentioned, and Janice Galton, and Willie Warre. We've worked very hard to take into account all the projections of decreases in our aid from the state and our aid from local revenues. We have actually more than taken into account all the projections and have made cuts to this budget. If we do not pass this budget, we lose the flexibility to make adjustments month to month. We lose the flexibility to take advantage of off-the-grant opportunities. This is a very strong and very conservative budget. A lot of work and a lot of time has been put into it, and I really would appreciate your consideration and in support of this budget because it will give us the flexibility to move forward and to continue to be a strong Ipswich. As you can look around, we're working very hard with the community, helping the restaurants, helping our stores, because we need to survive this COVID-19 crisis. And to do it, we need the flexibility in this budget. So please consider voting in favor of this.
Thank you. Mr. Gogan, have you had a chance to collect your thoughts and articulate your question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As I understand it, my question is going to be, what relief is coming from that $2.5 billion? It's right here, Moreno.
You want to repeat the same phrase on page seven of the FinCom report?
Yes.
All right, Sarah, can you speak to that?
Okay, the, right now, using the same assessed values that we have in fiscal year 20, and using those values for FY '21, and that's how we estimate the tax rate and the impact and everything for this budget, basically, the reduction in the debt that we have and the increases in the budget pretty much balance the budget, and then we made cuts. So the tax rate right now is 1402. We anticipate with the same values it being 1401, so it's a spec lower. But your assessed values are based on 2019 home sales. So we look at the home sales that already happened, and that's how the state of Massachusetts takes the assessed values. And we are seeing about a 2.5% to 3% increase in those assessed values. And so when I looked at that, there will be a reduction, Mr. Gogan is correct. And so for your average home value in 2020, it was $556,000. Your 2020 tax bill was $7,804. And with a 3% increase in values, which is what we anticipate, your tax bill will drop to $7,581, and that's a savings of $222 with this budget that you are voting on now. So because of that debt dropping off, the average household, $556,000, will see a lower tax bill, and FY '21, about $222 lower.
Okay, thank you very much.
So if you, so I threw you, I still say...
Sir, sir, someone else would like to speak. So I'm gonna ask you to step aside, you've spoken three times under this article.
I, I was about...
Hold one second, please. Janice, did you want to follow up with what Sarah said?
I, I did. So one thing I do want to make clear, because I don't know that the information has been out there publicly. So I had mentioned earlier that we submitted an interim budget for the month of July for FY '21. That was required by the state as a fallback, right? So that's our Plan B in the event that either we didn't hold town meeting or we didn't get a quorum. The interim budget that our Finance Director submitted and was approved by the DOR was a full budget for the month of July. So it is exactly in lines with the budget that you have in front of you. The process would be, and again, back to that question, if this fails, the process would be that we would then do the same for August. So while there is a modicum of flexibility that you lose, you only lose it for a month. And so we do have the ability to go to this interim budget, as I said, full budget for the month of July. We also have the ability at any point in July to put forth an August budget that is in excess of August of FY '20 to capture any of those COVID-related expenses. So I want to make sure that we're understanding what the process is so that you can make an informed decision on this vote.
Mr. Whitmore from the Select Board. If I could just clarify, the reason that the interim process exists that Janice just mentioned is for communities that did not or could not hold a town meeting. We are here today to do this. So if we decide that for this budget, if it doesn't pass, then we are operating on an interim monthly-to-monthly budget until we have another town meeting. That's the situation that we will be in. The Select Board unanimously supports the budget that we brought today so that we can manage the town the way we need to for, as long as we need to going forward.
Okay, yes.
I'm going to vote.
You moved to vote, okay. To our second, and we're, we're to vote. All right, so this is a two-thirds vote. And if you're in the tent, use your clickers and your card, put your card out. All those in favor of moving the question, going to the main vote on the main motion, please register one for yes, two for no in the tent, and raise your cards, yes, in the parking lot. And we're gonna count up to parking lot. We're gonna count all the two-thirds vote. I'll declare the simple majorities, but if anybody has a question, those second question. Yes, no, we're voting on whether to move the question, stop the debate. Okay, I declare the motion carries by two-thirds vote, 305 to 8. And there aren't enough people to make up the difference. Given that the number of voters we have. What's the total again? 376 people, which I do, so that's a two-thirds vote. Okay, so we'll go to the main, the vote on the main motion under the article, whether to pass this budget. This also is a two-thirds vote because some of the funds, $125,000, is coming out of stabilization. So that means it's not a simple majority, it's a two-thirds vote. So once again, we'll go to the clickers in the tent, the cards in the parking lot. All those in favor of the main motion passing the budget as I read the funds, please click one for yes, two for no in the tent. And yes, please raise your cards in the parking lot. I declare the motion carries by two-thirds vote, 291 to 28. Article Four, before we go to Article Four, we have another honored guest here. He's mindful of our constraints. Senator Bruce Tar also represents Manchester about a similar problem with, I believe, an outdoor meeting. They had clickers, the clickers been worked, and they had to go to what we're doing. So I'd just like to recognize Senator Bruce Tar, thank you for coming. Okay, Article Four, Mr. Hopping of the School Committee moves to set the Ipswich Public School budget for fiscal year 2021 at $32,019,77 to be funded as follows. $30,849,488 from town revenue, $1,169,589 from Education Stabilization Fund. Is there a second? Mr. Nylund from the School, can you second? Okay, Mr. Hopping. For Mr. Nylund, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, yes. Yes?
Okay, he should be on.
Carl Nylund, 34 Ground Avenue, the School Committee. A couple of comments, if I want to make first, on the current year's budget and then talk a bit about the next year FY '21 budget. First, everyone, of course, is well aware of this fairly unprecedented situation we found ourselves in with a mid-year school closure, taking kids out of school and not bringing them back until the fall, and then operating under this sort of new experiment in remote learning and operations. And we've recognized them before, but it's a nice opportunity to recognize again the fantastic work that faculty, staff, the leadership team at the schools have done to adapt to very challenging conditions. And we should thank as well the town manager, the town boards, parents, as well as the whole community for being incredibly supportive during very difficult times. So the School Committee, thank you. I also recognize that remote learning is not an optimal learning experience, and there will be impacts from it. That's why we are hopeful, despite the challenges that will be presented, that we can return kids safely to the buildings, but expect that there will be some recovery from what we've gone through this year. Interestingly, from a financial perspective, the schools in the current fiscal year have actually saved money, perhaps for some obvious reasons. Buildings were empty, energy costs were down, supplies and material demand is down. The good news there is we've been able to contribute that money to future savings, to stabilization, so we can extend our budgets out into the future. I should also say that despite all those challenges, I just would want to assure everybody that the state of our schools remains very strong. We have successes across the district. All of our standardized test scores, MCAS, SATs, APs are rising. We have innovations that many of you are aware of that occur across the buildings in all grades. I think there's a new energy with new leadership in some of the buildings. And we are, as best we can, trying to pay attention to the physical plant, the needs of our physical plant, particularly our aging elementary schools. All of that is enabled by the teaching staff, by the leadership team, and by the committee's support we enjoy. For FY '21 specifically, we undertook a slightly different approach to the budget preparation process. We did have a tighter collaboration from the School Committee and the leadership team to develop that budget. And I think it was very successful. It opened up some really interesting conversations, was informative for the School Committee, and I think prevented us from having to backtrack on some decisions later in the budget process. So we expect to continue that in the future. The result of the budget is, and the charge to the administrative team was to develop a budget that most appropriately addresses the needs of students. There was not a number given to them this year, they were asked to tell us what budget they need. They did so, and interestingly, the request did not come with a significant request for increased funding. Perhaps you've become used to being frugal, but they didn't have to be. And we're very creative about where they ask for additional funds. This FY '21 budget will serve as a foundational budget, therefore, going forward for our future budgets, including the years when we need to request another operational override. As planned, the FY '21 budget will withdraw funds from the Education Stabilization Fund. We see that in the Finance Committee report. About $1.6 million will be withdrawn, again, according to our plan. And it's also notable that this FY '21 budget, as we talked about earlier, reflects an overall decrease, rare occurrence, a decrease in the school budget due to the retirement of the debt on the middle high school building, and that's in savings to the taxpayer. So looking ahead, we do expect significant budgetary impacts in FY '21, like the beyond, from the pandemic and the response to it. Most of the costs, we'll start to realize those in FY '21. Fortunately, through careful planning, we have reserves, most notably the Education Stabilization account we can draw on. As many of you know who know the budget process, the schools also have fair amount of flexibility in the budget, so we can adapt and shift funds as necessary during the school course of the year. We also have received and expect to receive additional federal and state funds. Thank you to the state delegation for helping us with this. The state just announced an additional $225 per student that we will receive. That's about $260,000 for Ipswich. And so we think we have the flexibility to adjust to changing conditions. It is for those reasons that we oppose the idea of an incremental or 1/12 budget. And just to head off the question a little bit, if there is a suggestion of cutting the school budget, 10% of the school budget represents about $3.2 million. 80% of our budget is salary and benefits. $3.2... Three point two million dollars is fifty-three staff. Cutting fifty-three staff from the school would be calamitous. And the idea that we could put those teachers back into the classrooms mid-year is unworkable. Once the school year starts, our teaching models are fixed. You can't then mid-year suddenly change the approach. So if it's suggested, I hope you strongly oppose the idea of a bite of cut. And lastly, I'd say that longer term, we'll be looking at two major items. One is the need for the next operational override. The good news there is that through savings and careful management, we've forestalled that day until at least FY '23. We also will be looking hard at doing something about our school buildings, particularly the two elementary schools, and restarting some form of a school building project. So the School Committee supports this, passes this budget seven out, and I agree with the same.
Thank you. Janice, Finance Committee?
Janice Clements-Gelton, Chair of Finance Committee. So the split vote on the Finance Committee aligns with everything that we indicated for the municipal budget. It was not an issue with the overall number. It was more a statement on working within an interim budget.
And it's the same split five to four?
Correct.
Okay. And Mr. Whitmore of the Select Board, you were unanimous in support, I believe?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Anyone care to be heard on this one? Okay, so this is a two-thirds vote. We'll go to a two-thirds, the same votes. We'll do electronic. I'm sorry. Mr. Gogan. King Fisher Road.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Phil Gogan, King Fisher Road. And I have an amendment.
You have a motion?
Motion.
Look, may I see it, please? You know, in the future, I told you this last time, but if you get these in the earlier, move things longer. So Mr. Gogan of King Fisher Road moves to reduce the school budget by ten percent.
Is there a second?
Okay. Is anyone on a second, though? Okay, the motion fails. No second. So we'll go to the main motion for Article four. And this again is a two-thirds vote, so like the last one, clickers in the tent, cards in the parking lot. Oh, and I'm going to do a poll of confirmation, just a while. So all those in favor in the parking lot, raise your cards. Vote either way in the tent, by the clickers. Okay. I declare the motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Two hundred and eighty-one in favor, fifteen opposed. But there are only three hundred and seventy-six people here, so there's no way that even if we counted the no votes in the lot, that it would defeat it. So I declare the motion passed. All right, two-thirds vote. Article five. Okay, I thought we'd be out of here by now, but that's okay, we're not far. One thing, yeah, it's not going to rain until later, but we got a tent. So I just want to remind folks that the restrooms in the building are open, and there are also two porta potters here in the parking lot for young ladies. And I'm sure their hands are sanitized, et cetera, out there. Okay? So Article five. Mr. Whitmore of the Select Board moves to raise appropriate the sum of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars to pay the town's share of ensuing year's annual operating and debt service expenses of the Whittier Boat Tech, Regional Boat Tech High School. This requires a simple majority vote. Second?
Second.
Okay. Janice? School Committee, the Finance Committee? Finance Committee was eight to one in favor. The Select Board was unanimous in support, correct? Well, and School Committee, you want to be heard, Barry?
Yes, please.
Please. Mr. Hopping?
Just a little bit of information. Ipswich is a member of the district of Whittier, and as such, we are responsible for covering our share of tuition, transportation, capital expenses, and other educational fees for our students attending Whittier Regional High School. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education sets the annual tuition rates at vocational schools. Tuition rate at Whittier for next year is fifteen thousand, eight twenty-two per student, and the total assessment, which includes transportation, capital, and fees, is twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars per student. Currently, there are twenty-two Ipswich students who attend Whittier. One just graduated this past June, or this past year. Seven students have confirmed that they'll be attending Whittier as freshmen next year. Four hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars for cover Ipswich's portion of Whittier Tech School 2020-21 operating budget. School Committee supports us unanimously.
Thank you. Anyone care to be heard?
Maria Walters, Eleven May Lab.
I'm sorry, Marie?
Maria Walters, Eleven May Lab.
Right.
I would, I know these are really hard votes, but, I mean, our school department was able to decrease the budget. Whittier is talking about an increase for seven students. Four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for seven students, and they were not able to decrease their budget, when in fact, they haven't been having classes either, and they haven't.
So you're wondering why the increase?
Twenty-seven, thank you.
Okay.
So I'm just, you know, I think they need to cut their budget, just like we did, and I think we need to send them that message. It's just not, yes, we did sign a contract, but it's not a free ride when times are tough for them to just keep increasing, when we here are cutting our school budget. So I vote no.
Thank you. Pa, from the School Committee, you want to speak to that?
Hi, yes. Pa Heeler, Department of.
You can lower that if you want, seizures.
We actually have twenty-eight students attending, and.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, we have twenty-eight students attending next year on leave. And DESI sets the tuition rate. We don't have a say in that.
Okay.
The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
So we don't have a say, we just have to pay a percentage? Is that what you're saying? Okay. Okay. Anyone else care to be heard? So we'll go to a vote. This is a simple majority. If you're in the tent, please vote yes or no. Yes for one, one for yes, and two for no. In the parking lot, please raise your cards if you're in favor. Okay, I declare that passes by a majority vote. Hundred and sixty-four to twenty-one in the tent, and the vast majority of yeses in the parking lot. Article six. The Essex County Technical Institute budget. Mr. Whitmore of the Select Board moves to raise appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, ninety-two dollars to pay the town's share of this ensuing year's annual operating and debt service expenses of the Essex County Technical Institute. Is there a second? Second by Mr. White from the Finance Committee. And Janice, the FinCom is eight to one in favor? Yep. Okay. Mr. Whitmore, the Select Board was unanimous in support? Yep. And Mr. Hopping, the School Committee is unanimous in support. Is this again, is it, we just pay a percentage?
Yes.
We, we just, whatever our number is, we pay?
We give it a no.
Okay. All right. Okay, anyone care to be heard on this? All right, this is a simple majority vote, vote the same way. All those in favor, please click one in the tent, or raise your cards in the parking lot. Okay, I declare that passes by a majority vote. Hundred and sixty-three to fourteen in the tent, and the vast majority of cards in the parking lot. Article seven. Transfer of FY '20 appropriated budget funds to the Educational Stabilization Fund. Mr. Hopping of the School Committee moves to transfer the sum of one million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars from the Ipswich Public School budget for fiscal year 2020 to the Education Stabilization Fund. And this requires a simple majority vote.
Hello?
There you go, there you go, there you go.
Judge. Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. So in Article seven, your Finance Committee report indicates a different number than what we'll be voting today. So I'm going to have the School Committee speak to this number, and then we'll take a moment. The Finance Committee will vote separately as a recommendation to the meeting, and then move to whatever.
So you tell us, tell me what you're going to say. Yeah. So it went up between the printing of the report by two hundred thousand dollars. Carl or Barrett, you want to tell us why?
As Carl pointed out, and as Janice just mentioned, that when we originally voted this and it went to the Finance Committee report, it was two, the amount that's represented was two hundred thousand dollars less. But since then, due to a variety of different reasons, we have realized additional savings, which we'd like to now contribute to the Stabilization Fund as well. And included in those savings have been compensation for substitutes, long-term substitute stipends and overtime, purchased services, utilities, tuition, supplies and materials, and vehicle and equipment repair. So since the original number was submitted, we have now found an additional two hundred thousand dollars in the budget that we would also like to add to this request to put into the Stabilization Fund.
Okay. And the School Committee, you have a second?
They have a second.
Okay. Mr. Whitmore?
The Select Board supports this unanimously.
Okay. Janice, do you have a vote on the new number?
So I'm going to have Finance Committee, all those in favor of the increase by two hundred thousand into the Stabilization Fund. I don't know where my card is.
Six, seven.
And all those opposed. I don't know. Joe, do we have a, oh! Joe's in favor.
Joe's in the car, and he's.
Okay, that's eight, zero.
Okay. Okay, so anyone care to be heard? Seeing no one, let's go to a vote. This is a simple majority, we'll do it like the last one. Clickers in the tent, and cards in the parking lot. All those in favor, please raise your cards or click yes. And while the towers are counting, Jessica, we'll go to ten seconds more on the clickers in the tent. All right, let's count the no votes in the parking lot. So those who oppose to this in the parking lot, please raise your cards. So this is just, it could be like two or three votes off, so we're going to be safe. Okay, one no. So I declare that passes two fifty-two to ten by a two-thirds vote. Article eight. Transfer of FY '20 appropriated budget funds to Special Education Stabilization Fund. Mr. Hopping of the School Committee moves to transfer the sum of one hundred and two thousand dollars from the Ipswich Public School budget for fiscal year 2020 to the Special Education Reserve Fund. This requires a simple majority. Janice, I see the FinCom is in favor, eight to one.
Correct.
Okay. The Select Board was unanimous in support, and the School Committee was unanimous in support. Anyone care to be heard on this? Okay, so let's go to a vote. This is a simple majority, just like the last one. All those in favor, please click one in the tent, or opposed, click two. And all those in favor in the parking lot, please raise your cards. Okay. Let's count the no, yeah, let's count the no votes in the parking lot. Those opposed in the parking lot, please raise your cards.
We don't have any, we don't have any, but we'll tell them we have any.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is a simple majority. You know what? Never mind. This passes by a simple majority vote. Two twenty-seven to nine. Thank you. My oversight. So I got that, folks. Okay, Article nine is the capital, annual capital plan. Mr. Whitmore of the Select Board moves to transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund the sum of two hundred and sixty-nine dollars, to transfer for free cash the sum of six hundred and eighty thousand, ten dollars, and to transfer appropriate the sum of sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars, to transfer from the overlay surplus account the sum of forty thousand dollars, and to transfer from the fire pumper set aside fund the sum of fifty-one thousand, eighty-four dollars for a total capital expenditure of eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars to fund the capital budget as set forth in Article nine for the warrant for this town meeting, and the remaining funds be transferred to the Capital Stabilization Fund. Secured by Lynn Alex from the Select Board, and this requires a two-thirds vote. Janice, I see you folks ready to warn again?
Yes.
Okay. And the Select Board, Mr. Whitmore, you were unanimous in support? You were? And Mr. Hopping, you were unanimous in support, you did not a yes? So does anyone want to be heard on this one? Okay. We'll go to a vote. This is two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards in the parking lot. And those in favor in the tent, press one, and if you're opposed in the tent, press two. I declare that passes by a two-thirds vote, two hundred and twenty to eleven. Article ten. Water replacement main, I'm sorry, water department main replacement. Mr. Whitmore of the Select Board moves that the town appropriate the sum of one million, five hundred thousand dollars to survey, design, permit, and construct improvements to the town's water distribution system, including the payment of incidental or related costs, and to raise this appropriation, that the treasurer with approval of the Select Board be authorized to borrow that amount under the provisions of Chapter forty-four or pursue any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes to the town, therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved for this vote, lest any such premiums apply to the payment, the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs in a like amount. Is there a second? Second from Ms. Tammy Clark. Jones, sorry. I was going to say Ha, sorry. So this is a two-thirds vote. Janice, if Select, the FinCom is eight to one in favor?
In favor.
Okay. And Willie, the Select Board was unanimous in support?
Yes.
And the School Committee was unanimous in support. Okay, does anyone care to be heard on this one? Then we'll go to a vote. This is a two-thirds vote, because we're borrowing. Remember, anything at town meeting, you borrow a dollar, borrow ten dollars, it's a two-thirds vote. So clickers in the tent, and those in favor in the parking lot, please raise your cards. I declare that passes by a two-thirds vote, two hundred and twenty to nine. Article eleven. Receding funds from 2019 annual town meeting warrant, Article ten. Mr. Whitmore of the Select Board moves to rescind two million, five hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and forty dollars from the five million, five hundred thousand dollar borrow we have raised on the article ten for the warrant for the May fourteen, 2019 annual town meeting. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Dougherty from the Finance Committee. And this is a simple majority vote. This is a clerical glitch, it's something happened last year, my fault, I didn't catch something. Mr. Whitmore, sorry. Oh, actually, let's get, let's get the boards for. Janice, I see the FinCom is unanimous in support. It's great to see unanimous. Mr. Whitmore, the Select Board is unanimous as well?
We're known for our independent thought process.
I see that. And the School Committee is unanimous as well. Mr. Wasserman?
Thank you, Mr. Murray. It looks to me, and that's the first question I have, are we spending roughly five million dollars this year? Do we, we get back the money that we tailed in Article eleven? And we have the Article in ten, which also voted twenty-five, two million five.
What happened was, in the meeting last year.
I understand.
Do you understand the reason for this?
Yes.
Okay. So what's your question?
So we're using last year's two thousand, two million five hundred, and we're going to vote another two million. We've already voted, is that correct?
Mr. Moreno, do you want to speak to this?
Thank you, Anthony. Sorry, my mic's there again. Anthony Moreno, Town Manager. This is for the Article ten was for a different project, Mr. Wasserman, and that's for an upcoming water project on Market Street. There is remaining funds here that we need to fund. We'll do that in the fall. We'll bring that additional funds through. That's why we dropped it by a million dollars, so we'll have an additional article in the fall. Bring it forward, and we're also going to do a valid vote at that point. That was what the FinCom requested, so we stay in the spirit of the Bamberdach.
That's, I thought I understood correctly. It is for two different projects?
Correct.
Okay.
The first one was the.
I would request that Jim Engel give us some idea of why the money is being spent. He's very eloquent, and he knows his stuff.
And he's here.
We don't allow personal comments at town meetings, but we'll make an exception for this one. Jim, if you want to say something? Do you want to bring us up to speed on this?
Thank you, Bill. Jim Engel, 362 Lion Brook Road, Chair of the Water Subcommittee. The two borrowings that are the subject of these two articles have to do with major water infrastructure projects. The first has to do with, in the Market Street area, replacing water mains in the Market Street area, and that's the requested authorization for $5,000,000. The second article-
Don't want to do that.
The second has to do, as Mr. Moreno has stated, is a cleanup of a mistake that was made a year ago. A year ago, we authorized at town meeting a borrowing of $5 million, more or less, for the replacement of the major water main on High Street, which is the work that's been going on since late last calendar year. That project, over that authorization of $5 million, should have included a ballot vote, because we have a bylaw which we refer to as the Bamford Bylaw, that any borrowing in excess of 0.1% of the total assessed value of the town must have a confirming vote by ballot as part of the town meeting procedure.
And what is that number, roughly?
That's roughly $2.5 million. So the $5 million authorization last year was faulty in that it didn't contain the ballot question, the ballot process. Article 12 reduces that $5 million authorization to roughly $2.5 million to stay within a tenth of a percent of the assessed value. So that's what's going on here. Two very different projects, the subject of two different articles.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else care to be heard? All right, so we'll go to a vote. This is a simple majority. In the tent with the clickers, yes or no? In the parking lot, please raise your cards if you are in favor of the main motion under Article 11 to make this clerical adjustment. You know what? There are only 376 people checked in, and there are 208 that are in favor, so I declare it passes by a simple majority vote. Okay, Article 12, Waste Water Department Main Replacement. Mr. Whitmore of the Select Board moves that the town appropriate the sum of $2 million to survey, design, permit, and construct improvements to the town's wastewater system, including the payment of incidental and related costs. And to raise this appropriation, that the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, be authorized to borrow that amount under the provisions of Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved under this vote, unless any premiums apply to the payment of cost of issuance of such bonds and notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a amount. Is there a second? Second from Mr. Dougherty. This is again a borrowing, so it's a two-thirds vote. This Finance Committee was unanimous in support. The Select Board was unanimous in support, and I'm sure the School Committee took no position because, why should they? Does anyone care to be heard on this one? Jim pretty much brought us up to speed on what's going on here. So let's go to a vote. This is a two-thirds vote. All those with clickers, please register yes, one for yes and two for no in the tent. And those in the parking lot, raise your cards if you're in favor. Something happened, it's out of my copy. Article 13, Other Postemployment Benefits Funding. Mr. Whitmore of the Select Board moves to raise and appropriate the sum of $73,348, and to transfer the sum of $215,033 for free cash, and to transfer the combined sum to the Other Postemployment Benefits Trust Fund. This requires a simple majority vote. Ms. Oxon-Sackins and Janice, the Finance Committee was unanimous in support?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Whitmore of the Select Board similarly?
Yes.
And the School Committee as well. Anyone care to be heard on this? Okay, so we'll go to a vote, a simple majority. Clickers in the tent, and those in favor in the parking lot, please raise your cards. I declare that passes by a simple majority vote. 207 to eight. Okay, Article 14, Citizens Petition. Ms. LaFrance of San Pebble Drive moves that the meeting take no action under this article. Seconded by Mr. White. Anyone care to oppose that? Okay, so this requires a simple majority vote. We'll go to the vote as before, and afterwards, let's hold on, let's not leave at once, a couple announcements to make, okay? So those in favor, clickers, press one. Those in the parking lot, taking no action under this article, please raise your cards. Okay, I declare that passes by a simple majority vote. 192 to nine. So thank you all for coming. That, also, before we get into logistics, take a motion to adjourn to the ballot vote on Tuesday at, what were the hours hanging? 10 to 2 at the YMCA? And you can absentee vote until noon on Monday. So I'll take a motion to adjourn to that, after which the meeting will dissolve. Mr. Craft from former Selectman, FinCom member, et cetera, so moves. Seconded by Mr. Dougherty. All those in favor, please raise your hands and stick your cards out the windows. I declare that passes by a majority vote. Okay, so the exit strategy. First of all, thank you all for coming. It's a couple glitches, but, you know, we had a scramble, and things went well. Thank you very much to the towers. Thank you all to the department heads from the town who came to help us out. Let's have a round of applause for all of them.